Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand with me to say the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, Shell. Will you do your roll?
Councilmember Brenda Kinser.
President.
Councilmember Jimmy Corningay.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Owen.
Please.
Councilmember Brendan MacDuffin.
President.
Councilmember Carl Lee Young.
President.
Councilmember Jared Couch.
Here.
And Councilmember Glenn Allen.
President.
Okay, thank you. I am looking now for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 11.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Corningay, seconded by Councilwoman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And we will move right on to our special guest. So, Macklin, if you want to come forward and introduce your students. Thank you for being here tonight, by the way.
Thank you for having us. So, good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the City Council, city staff, and citizens of Cedar Valley. Thanks for having us here this evening and allow us to share the current happenings and upcoming changes to Cascade's Job Corps here in 2020. The goal of my presentation tonight is to educate and inform the City Council and those present for the plans of Cascade's Job Corps in 2020. In doing so, my goal is that you all can educate the citizens of Cedar Valley and share the happenings, plans, the services we offer, and engagement opportunities with those who live in the city. I'm going to share some information about Job Corps in general, give you a current snapshot of Cascades, I'll share an update about our admissions and placement department, and then discuss our current trade offerings as we've had some recent changes to those as of late. We'll conclude with some student presentations, and I'd like to thank our academy director, Darryl Wutton, for being here this evening and enjoying our presentation. So, let's get started. Where am I pointing?
I think you're pointing over here.
Pointing there. So, just a really brief overview about Cascade's Job Corps is that we're a federally funded, tuition-free program for young adults with educational or financial barriers to employment. You must be 16 to 24 years old to qualify, and you must meet the additional eligibility requirements put in place by the U.S. Department of Labor. Students who are accepted in Job Corps receive free lodging, food, education, recreation, and placement services during their stay at Job Corps. Cascades was formerly a top-10 center in the nation out of 125 Job Corps centers, and we look forward to returning to that in the near future. In December of 2015, our center was shut down by the U.S. Department of Labor as we were awarded by the demonstration pilot contract. We reopened in May 2017, and now we're operating two separate Job Corps programs, one traditional and as well as the demonstration pilot through June of 2022. After June 2022, we'll return to running the traditional Job Corps center. For those who aren't familiar, we're located up at the Swift Center, the former site of Northern State Hospital, in Ward 5. So, as of today, we have 280 students on the center. We have 135 staff that we employ, the majority of them being on center, but we do have three satellite offices down in the greater Seattle area to help with recruitment. We have a capacity of up to 300 students, and we're getting very close, and we look forward to being at capacity for the foreseeable future. We're at a very exciting time with the demonstration pilot having started in 2017. We're having our students apply to four-year universities, and they're being accepted. That's a very, very exciting thing for us. We're having students receiving job offers and are moving off-center to go pursue their careers in other locations. We have lots and lots of students doing work-based learning, participating in internships, doing their clinical hours, and even more is about to start soon as we introduce these new trades. We have our first group of traditional Job Corps students who are completing their trade and moving on to other trades or moving off-center, which I did not personally expect to happen this quickly, but it's very exciting. And then, one thing that I've been looking forward to for the past three years that I've worked at Job Corps is seeing our first group of Skagit Valley College graduates. And so, the first group of them will happen in April, and then there'll be a larger group that will complete in June, and there'll be a graduation in June that will have up to 25 of our students graduating from Skagit Valley College. So, that's really fantastic. Moving forward, I'd like to talk about the changes that have occurred in our admissions and placement department. And I'd just like to note that this isn't just specifically to Cascades, but at the Job Corps program as a whole. These went into effect back in December of 2019. So, during the demonstration pilot, we had some restrictive elements on who could attend Job Corps. These restrictive elements included the STAR test. You had to test in at an eighth-grade level on your math and your reading. We had a lottery system that created a control group, that established a control group so we could evaluate the success of our demonstration pilot program. And we had a requirement where you must live on-center during the demonstration pilot. All of those have been rescinded, and we are back to the national enrollment requirement plan. So, you can see those requirements up there. One thing that we're introducing right now is a non-res option. So, students can live in town here or within the region and commute to Job Corps and be a full-time student. This is something that was offered in the past, and we're very excited to be able to bring that back to our center. One thing that is very different for us now, and this has changed across Job Corps, is where we can recruit. The DOL has looked at it very closely and said that contractors and centers need to recruit in specific areas to make it equitable for the contractors who do recruitment and placement for them, and then centers to also recruit in place within their workforce development areas. What we used to do is we recruited all over the state of Washington. We had offices in Spokane, Vancouver, and our recruitment area has shrunk significantly. But this is something that we're looking at more of an opportunity and not as much of restriction. We are now recruiting for King County, Snohomish County, and our workforce development area, which is Region 3, which includes Wacom, Skagit, Island, and San Juan County. The benefit that we see to this is that we can focus more on students who are going to be giving back to our economic development within the region, as well as focusing on our workforce development within our region, and creating quality placements and partnerships with local employers to ensure that our students can find success as well as the community members who they'll work with. In addition, we're also now recruiting for two additional Job Corps centers in Oregon. Something that I know that affected our county greatly was that when the hard trades went away from Cascade's Job Corps in 2015. One benefit for recruiting for these two centers in Oregon is that they offer a myriad of hard trades that students in this area can get local help to be able to attend those centers. The two centers are Angel Job Corps in Yohots, Oregon, and then Tongue Point Job Corps Center, which is in Astoria, Oregon, and that's a top-10 ranked center in the nation. The trades that they offer include automotive and machine repair, construction, urban forestry, advanced manufacturing, hospitality trades, construction trades, office administration trades, healthcare trades, and one of the unique programs in all of Job Corps is a seamanship program that's offered at Tongue Point Job Corps. It's the only one in the country, and if a student is interested in joining that program, all they need to do is contact our admissions department located right here in town, and we can get them working through the entire admissions process as opposed to having them working remotely with somebody down in Oregon. We look at this as a major benefit because these students will go learn their hard trade down in Oregon, and they will come back to our region to then join the workforce and contribute to the success of our community. Come on. Oh, and there we're now we're jumping to. So, I want to talk about the approved program updates and why these program updates occurred. There's a change in national leadership at the National Office of Job Corps. Lina Jacob Simmons was the former National Director, and she has moved to another branch, the U.S. Department of Labor, and we are now operating under our new National Director, Deborah Carr. When Deborah Carr came on board, she saw that the number of students required to satisfy the demonstration pilot evaluation had been met. Thus, she decided to halt enrollment at Cascades and move forward with a traditional Job Corps program while fulfilling the commitment to our pilot program. So, now we're working with two different tracks of students, our college-track students and our career-track students. Our career-track students have four ultimate goals, and that's entering an entry-level career, going to college, joining the military, or doing advanced training at another Job Corps center or our center as we now offer advanced training. The college-track student's ultimate goal was always to graduate from SVC with their associates and then continue on with their careers or go to a four-year university. As of today, we have 118 career-track students and 162 college-track students. So, this change occurred in July 2019, so we've really seen an uptick in career students, and they're starting to catch up to the college-track students pretty quickly. And towards 2022, we'll continue to see that number of college-track students diminish and that career-track student approach 300. So, we look forward to that. Additionally, we're going to keep healthcare and IT trades on campus, and we're going to be adding culinary arts, security and protective services, office administration, and advanced IT training. I'm not going to talk in detail about advanced IT training because we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like yet, but what that will be is that students who are getting basic IT training at other centers will be able to come to Cascade's Job Corps Center and take advanced IT training with our staff and then get placed within this region or go back to their homes. Additionally, our students who are in basic IT training will be able to apply for the advanced training and join that program as well. The main reason that I wanted to address you all today is to let you know about what these new trades offer and what they look like and who we plan to partner with within the area. So, we're going to start out with office administration. This trade started back in 2019, and we've already had two completers from this trade. We currently have nine students who are enrolled in the trade, and two are nearing the completion within that group, and we just got three more of those students on-center yesterday with our new input. Completion time varies between four to six months depending on the student, and one student was able to complete in as quickly as two months, and that was somebody who came in with some previous knowledge of how all of this worked, and they had a goal, and they're doing good things there. So, the certifications that are offered within this trade are Microsoft Office Specialist, which you achieve by getting your certification in Microsoft Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, all free of charge to the student. Additionally, we have IC3 GS5 Digital Literacy Certification. I had no idea what that meant, so I had to ask David, who's our instructor, and David informed me that it's your basic computing fundamentals and things you need to do around the office, which include things like scheduling, maintaining files, various security measures. I know passwords are very, that's a big part of it, password management, staff management, all that. So, if you're interested, we can talk more to David about that. And then, key applications, which is the basics of those MOS skills. Most students will come in and they'll cruise through that within their first two weeks, and then they'll go on to work on their MOS. Let's see. And then our placement opportunities. So, we see some opportunities for students to continue on the college track after that at Wacom Community College, getting their certificate in logistics and a business AA. They could also pursue their business AA at Skagit if they do advanced training with us. But many of our students who enter this trade will actually go on to do the medical administration trade or an IT trade at Cascades and use this as a foundation for that training. Additionally, we have WAC students who are just looking to enter into an entry-level job right out the gate. That could be something in construction, manufacturing, hospitality, back-office wholesale, retail functions, and HR. So, we look forward to working with partners around the community. People who we've already connected with in this area specifically are Savvy Bank, Wells Fargo, and BKCO Title and Escrow. And we just had somebody from Skagit Valley Malt who was out on our campus yesterday, and they're going to look to take on an OA intern or a staff here in the near future. Security and Protective Services. So, who you see up there is Glenn Stahely. He is our new instructor for Security and Protective Services, and he is going to be training students to be certified protection officers on our center. There are students who are enrolled in our program. They're in what's called the CPP phase or Career Preparation Period. So, they're going through the first eight weeks of campus, and they'll be starting trade with him on February 24th. We just got a couple more security students on campus yesterday, so we have just about 10 students on center, and the trade capacity is 30 at a time with growing admission. The program will take eight to 12 months, and students who successfully complete the course will be able to take an additional eight to 12 weeks to earn their CPO certification. One of the innovations that we see in this is that an entry-level security guard requires a mere eight hours of basic training to be able to work within Washington State. We're doing extensive training for these students and offering them a certification at no charge so they can hopefully earn a job somewhere like security at Boeing, being a security officer for transportation, the refinery, or other infrastructure protection. If a student is going after their CPO, they will do up to six months of work-based learning or an internship at our center. They'll work as security assistants and work with our security staff directly, and they will also work off-center. Some partnership opportunities that we see is working with the county at large events like the Skagit County Fair, potentially working with organizations like Shell or the refineries in the area, and then we expect that some of our students will hope to go on to work for Border Patrol or the Customs Inspection based on our geography, and we will support them in that. I also think that some of our students will likely to attend Skagit Valley College's Parks Law Enforcement Program or Basic Law Enforcement Reserve Program after Cascades, so we look forward to talking with them more about that. One thing that's really important to me about this trade is that it's a growth industry, and we look forward to contributing to that growth within our workforce development region. Finally, Culinary Arts, something that we are familiar with as it was at Cascades back until 2015. Enrollment begins in April 2020. We just made the move to hire our instructor. Her name is Laurel Maybach, and she will start on February 18th. So, what we have right now is an empty, beautiful, shiny kitchen that is fully up to code and ready to go, but lacks all the supplies and students to make it happen. So, good luck to Laurel, and we look forward to having our students begin soon because we already have several students with approved files who are ready to come to center, but there needs to be a teacher and some stuff in there before they can make that happen. So, we look forward to that in the very near future. The program will take eight to 10 months, and those who successfully complete the course will be able to do advanced culinary arts at Treasure Island Job Corps as a direct transfer. Additionally, we look to have students at SVC or BTC's culinary program, or students who are simply looking to enter into work at local restaurants, care facilities, hospitals, casinos, or on cruise ships. Some of the innovations that we look to bring to this are cooking gourmet lunches for students who are doing long center during lunch. We'll make food that will be sold in the student store to benefit our Student Government Association, and we have three gardens on center, so we'll grow our own vegetables, herbs, and fruits for a farm-to-table experience. Those of you who attend our community luncheons, then you will now be eating food from our culinary arts students, which is very exciting, and they will also be available to cater local events within town here. Finally, the two certifications that they will get is their Washington Food Handler's Permit and then also their Sheriff Safe Certification, which that certification will really help them along if they are going to SVC or BTC, because that's the first couple of weeks of the program for most of them. At this time, I'd like to invite up our first student speaker. This is Jennifer Harvey. She's an IT student, and she's in the Network Plus trade.
Thank you, Macklin. Thank you, Council. As I said, as he said, I am Jennifer Harvey. I am actually from Bellingham, so this is quite close to home for me. I entered about mid-November in Job Corps, so I'm still quite new to the program. And I originally came to, I originally really didn't want to go to Job Corps. I'm 23, so I'm almost out of the age range. And I had a job. I have my associate's degree from Wacom Community College, but I just wasn't able to find work, and I wasn't able to finance my continuing education, so I wasn't able to get my bachelor's. It kind of culminated when my papa, who has been working very hard the past 64 years, first he was a Marine, then a cop, jack-of-all-trades, and the thing that broke the camel's back, so to speak, is old injuries from when he was logging. He tore his shoulder real bad, and so I realized I have to get a job that will not only support me but support my papa, because I know my dad would never accept help from me unless I was able to take care of myself first, like any self-sacrificing parent or stubborn lord would. So, essentially, my main drives in Job Corps are to exhaust my ambition because family is my greatest motivator here, and it's probably the main thing that's keeping me through. And I want to continue on through the program, get as many certifications as I can so we can escalate through our lower-class standing. We've been underclass the entire time I've been with my dad. So, I want to be able to give back what he's given me in any way, shape, or form. So, I want to go into cybersecurity as it's a very, very quickly growing field, especially along the I-5 corridor. It's ridiculous how many companies are in need of cybersecurity along I-5, and there's just a lot of opportunity for employ here, especially since from Bellingham, I can work anywhere, as Bellingham is a growing community, especially with the Seattle creep and the rent crawl. But as a Wacom alumni, when I heard about their bachelor's program, I tried really hard to get into it, but finances never swayed my way. So, I'm really hopeful that Cascade will help me get back into Wacom so I can finish my cybersecurity training and move on to something better. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our next student speaker is Mr. Koo Lennington, who is a medical assistant student in the healthcare trade.
All right. My name is Koo Lennington. I'm in the healthcare trade. I enrolled in Cascades in August 2019. Right now, I am trying to get my CMA license, on top of that, my CNA and my CMAA. My goal at Cascades is to do my best, work hard, and do what's necessary to get through any obstacle I can. And I decided to attend Cascades because I had nowhere else to go. I had work, I had everything, but I knew that my future wasn't complete if I didn't continue my education, and I would warn myself out with work. I plan to do an internship at Seattle Children's Hospital, if not at Army Mannequin Hospital at JBLM, either during Job Corps or after Job Corps. After Cascades, I plan to do an internship, as I said previously, in occupation or in occupation in the medical field or apply for the Peace Corps. And I have a little surprise. I have a quote that actually helped me through a structural schedule, especially when I was in ROTC, and it's from Admiral McRaven. "In Navy SEAL training, there is a bell, a brass bell that hangs in the center of a compound, where everyone can see. All you have to do to quit is ring the bell. Ring the bell, you no longer have to wake up at 5:00 in the morning. Ring the bell, you no longer have to do the runs, the PT, or the obstacles, and you will no longer have to endure the hardships of training. Just ring the bell. If you want to change the world, don't ever ring the bell."
Thank you.
All right. So, to close, I just wanted to mention our next community event that's coming up here. Our Community Relations Luncheon is on March 19th at 11:30 AM. I'd be happy to have anybody in this room attend, and all you need to do is get in contact with me. My contact information is up here, and I'll leave a small stack of business cards with the Council here after the meeting. I want to thank our student presenters and Darryl for joining us this evening. Thanks to everybody who listened here, city staff, citizens, and the City Council, and thank you so much for supporting Cascade's Job Corps.
Thank you. Macklin, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, no problem.
So, first off, I want to thank you for the tour that I had a couple of months back. Greatly appreciate that. It was very enlightening. Could you share with us, kind of differentiate between what is the traditional and what was the pilot program?
Yeah, so absolutely. So, like I said, the main goal with the pilot program was to try to do a dual enrollment with Skagit Valley College, and forgive me if I didn't mention that in this presentation, but the dual enrollment would be that a student would enter Job Corps, and then they would go in, after 10 weeks, they would go to Skagit Valley College, and they would be dual-enrolled doing their trade simultaneously as their associate's degree, with the ultimate goal being that they graduate with their associate's degree in a field related to their trade, so computer science, multimedia, and interactive technology, or a pre-nursing degree for our healthcare students. What we've gone back to now is that a student needs to just complete their trade before applying to go into college, or if they don't have the goal of college, then before they apply for the military, before they apply for advanced training, or before they do another trade on our center as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
So, one thing I just want to say, I want to thank the students for coming. And last night, I was at an economic development event where we were discussing the importance of education, and it became quite clear through the conversations that really the way to get ahead in our society anymore is that you do need training and continue to train, continue to grow. And I'm impressed with the fact that you left jobs or positions where you were at because you wanted something better for yourself. So, my hats are off to you, and congratulations, and push on, because I think that you'll be very successful people. Thank you. Thank you, Macklin.
Absolutely. And I'd also like to thank Zach and Dylan for coming along to support their peers tonight. That's great, so. Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will move on to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
So, just a couple of things here tonight. An update on our hiring. We have, like I've said before, we've got one in the academy right now. We had good news come in just, I think, Monday morning that we had hoped to get somebody in the academy in April, and he got bumped up two weeks to mid-March, so that's going to be a real big help. He comes on board next week, so we'll have him for a little shy of a month to kind of make sure he kind of gets all his stuff, gets everything ready, and is ready to pass the physical test, and we're looking forward to getting him on board. We've made job offers to three other people, so we actually have five people kind of in the hiring loop right now. The final three were waiting for, they're conditional offers, waiting for final backgrounds and their acceptance. So, that's where we're at with hiring, and we've, I got to thank Glenn Gardner. He has worked his tail off getting that mobile radar reader sign mounted on the back of Dave Pierce's old patrol car that we retired from patrol. And I don't know, have any of you seen it out yet? It's out in the neighborhood off of Klinger Street right now, and Glenn got ahold of MPH Industries, had it wired up to turn on the overhead lights when you go 10 over. So, not only does it flash the light, give you the speed, it turns on the red and blue lights. We're expecting, next week, we're expecting some complaints from the people on railroad about the lights, but maybe we'll get the speeders knocked out there. And I'm going to try to find a way to get the Council the data off that reader board. It automatically generates a report that says how many cars have gone past it. We had it set up someplace at the day, it was over 5,000 cars had gone past it. It gives the average speed, the highest speed. It doesn't tell you who the winner was, but it gives you a really good feedback to give the public whenever they start asking about speeding, and it'll give us a place to pinpoint some of our limited resources right now on just going out and trying to do some enforcement. But it's a great tool, and the car looks cool sitting there with the radar reader board on it. I think I've told you this before, but that radar reader board came from WASPIC, the Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, a traffic safety grant, so it didn't cost us, the city, anything. It came from the grant that we get radar units and alcohol sensors and stuff like that from. So, excellent program, and they take good care of us. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Klinger.
I'm happy to say, at the last council meeting, I told you that we didn't have anything to say except that we had some testing going on, but we have four new firefighters for the city. Three of them are residents, and a couple of them are involved also in the college program, which is really good because that's one of our goals. We want to kind of integrate more with that. But we have three new residents, so our quarters are full today, and we have one new outside volunteer, so we're excited to get them started in the process. So, that's it.
Excellent. Congratulations. Mr. Coleman.
So, we've been following the legislature. As I mentioned the last time at the City Council meeting, there's several bills that could affect land use and planning, so we've been following several of those. They seem to be fast-tracking and moving forward. Not going to go through the list of them, but right now, it looks like a lot of those bills may be advancing, so I'm trying to keep up with them. There's a lot going on there, as well as working on the hearing examiner. We haven't scheduled the time yet, but we're getting closer to the Skagit County Secure Transition Facility, having their time with the hearing examiner for their conditional use permit. So, I've been spending some time working on that, and that's the important topic for the city. And I think that's all I got for tonight.
So, you probably, I know I have received them, but have you also sent those bills out to the Council? Because they could write letters. They could actually get in contact with their legislature and write letters.
Does the Council receive AWC notices? They give out legislative notices. That's the same location that I've been getting the updates from, and I'm signed up for the email list serve for Senate Bill 6536. email list serve for Senate Bill 6536. The one that's most concerning is House Bill 2570, which is the accessory dwelling unit bill. And it would more or less gut the ADU legislate, the ADU regulations that the planning commission just finished working on, and that'll have to you at the next city council meeting for your review. So yeah, if the council would like to, I can send those out, send some materials out to the council so that they can comment to legislature.
All right, thank you.
Well, John, can I say something?
Please do.
I have HB 2570, SB 6536, and SB 6617, they all got my attention, if you will, from the AWB and/or AWC. And, you know, it's getting to the point, I don't know if they want a centralist government to run every city around the state, or, you know, I hope the Association of Washington Cities is very aggressive in fighting some of these proposals.
They have been in previous years, but these types of bills just keep coming back to the legislature. And, you know, it gets more and more difficult, I think, for AWC to defend their position when it keeps coming back. There's also another one I forget off the top of my head, which is relating to requirements for a comprehensive plan element to address fish and streams. So that's another one. So that's Representative Lechenoff. That's, I think she sponsored that bill, so.
It would be nice to have a list of legislators and addresses to write letters or email or whatever.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Is that a request for a list?
Yeah, if AWC has, you know, a list of legislators to write to, you know, that we can express our concerns.
Yeah, okay. I'll get something out to the council tomorrow.
And they do list them, the AWC does list them. If you kind of go through the website, you'll be able to see. It's an extensive website, so yeah. Yeah. So, all right, thank you. Yeah. Thank you, John. Thank you for staying on top of them. Mr. Freiberger?
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been discussing for a couple of years now, we've been working on the Jones-John-Liner Trail Road corridor scoping study. I have the final version of that now, and I'll make a copy of that available to council, and I have it in my office. As a follow-up to that, Aaron and I made two trips, and the mayor and I made a third trip to Olympia to visit with legislature. What we're trying to do is move forward, funding $850,000 for the Jones-John-Liner BNSF undercrossing project. And we visited with the House and Senate chairs, the respective transportation committees, and the ranking members, and then our delegation, and also the 10th, Liz Lovlett. And we also, the mayor and I testified at the Senate Transportation Committee meeting, where they have brought back again the LEAP transportation package. They don't expect that to move forward this year, but they had a hearing on it, and so we were there to talk about it. And it gave us the opportunity to talk about our House transportation request for this year for the undercrossing. So I think we got our message out, and Carl was also down there, working behind the scenes, talking to many of the same people, and others as well. And nobody's holding out any great hope, but they did accept at the House level a transportation budget request for that $850,000. And I think we got our message across pretty well.
Yes, I think we did too.
Mayor can fill in more on that, and Aaron. So that was a lot of my time since the last council meeting. Also, in the final review on our sewer comprehensive plan, and we'll be tying that in with our CIP, our capital improvements program, over the next 10 years. We've got several of those projects in various stages of design right now, including the electrical system improvements, which I've been talking about. I expect to see the plans and specs for that for the next couple of weeks, and put that out to bid, along with the aeration system upgrade and a number of other things. David is moving ahead well with the SR20 West Lane widening project. He's coordinating that, of course, with the county, and also with our separate shared-use path project out there. We expect to get that out to bid in the next few weeks. And the county has decided to push their project forward to build the behavioral health stabilization campus. It's got a new name now, and I'm not sure if I know what the new nomenclature is. But they're planning to break around out there in May on that, if they can get all the permitting in place. So that's a good sign, because we had been hearing some waffling on their part about whether they were going to proceed. So that's all moving ahead well, we think. And beyond that, there was some concern from the council about the flood events that we had, and how that affected us. I'm happy to say that we didn't really see any major damage. We had a little bit of washout on the new path that was put in by the Skagit Fisheries Group down north of Riverfront Park, minor, we'll repair that with our own forces. And that's about it. Someone may have seen, we had a couple of cottonwood trees that we cut down as a part of our preventive maintenance. Might have looked like they had fallen over, but that was just our own maintenance. I would also like to just let you know that your wastewater crews have done an outstanding job this last week. We had a high-water event during the heavy rain last week. They got a call out at 7:00 p.m. in the evening on Wednesday, and basically, it started with the collection crew, both of them were out from 7:00 and 8:00 all night until 5:00 in the morning. We basically were getting a high-flow event in our Jones Road lift station, to the point where they were pumping effluent out of that and transferring it to other locations to discharge that, pretty much all night. It was just more water than we could handle. It was pretty obvious that we had a direct connection that had opened up somewhere that was feeding the stormwater into it. They did find that. Over the course of the next couple of days, we had a sewer cleanout that was located right in a ditch on Wallard Creek, just north of the city limits, or right at the city limits, that had been hit and broken off slightly above the invert of the ditch. And so as the ditch filled up with the high event, it started flowing in copious amounts of water. We were taking in 500 gallons a minute, we think, in there during that time. It was, you know, over 500,000 gallons of extra flow we handled in that lift station. So that has been repaired now, and we will relocate that cleanout out of the ditch when the weather allows it, but we have got it capped, so that shouldn't happen again. And Debbie was out there herself all, most of the night as well. So anyway, you can be proud of your crew and what they've done, and continue to do down at the plant. And I'm also happy to report that the first of our new operators reported for work on Monday, and Casey Souza. And we're real excited to have him there, and he's already in training there in the lab, and we'll move him out in the field to take advantage of his strong mechanical abilities as well. So that's a report from Public Works. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did you have a question, Mr. Couch? You'll plug your.
Mark, on the operators, was there two positions, and have they both been filled?
So where we're at on that, we interviewed, and we had four really strong candidates. Casey was clearly the best. We had a second one that we did make an offer to, but it turned out in subsequent evaluation, there was a restriction on her license, such that she does not, or cannot get a CDL. And that was an absolute requirement for the position, and so we did not fill that position. The feeling of the supervisor and Kevin Nguyen, who were hoping to take that role on, was that we didn't have a very strong lab person, other than that person, in the current stable. And so we're going to wait a little bit, and we'll possibly re-advertise, although we have those other three strong candidates, so we may go ahead and decide on that by the 1st of March to hire a second one. The third position that we anticipate coming open is to replace the superintendent themselves. Kevin is still trying to decide whether he wants to take that on or not. He has some personal things in his life right now that make that a little bit troublesome for him, but we're hoping that works out for him, and we're giving him a little time. Debbie's agreed to extend her tenure until the 1st of August, which will help us with that whole process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berg?
So just to give you a heads up, we'll have a pretty heavy agenda next time, as I work to transition to Doug and his new role as city supervisor, and wrap up some projects that have been pending for a while. So look for the last couple of meetings to have just a bit more action on the agenda, and a little thicker packet.
Mr. Merriman?
Just a couple of things from finance. One is Biased Software is the financial package that we use, that we do all our budgeting and our day-to-day work on. They've been acquired by Springbrook Software just recently. Springbrook is a much larger company, does the same type of package. They've promised that Biased would just become a subsidiary, and they won't merge them in. We'll see. I've seen these acquisitions happen a lot in the past, and usually you get about five or six years, and suddenly the merge happens. The thing that I want to watch there is Biased Software is very affordable for smaller cities. Springbrook Software is for larger cities. So we'll have to be a little bit cautious and see what their fee structure does. We don't want them to walk us into having to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on a software system at some point in the future. So we'll do that, we'll keep an eye on that, and keep working with them as well, to see what we can do to help with that transition. The second item I have is, I'll be putting together a year-end financial summary for you. I did one of those last year. We haven't been audited yet, so it could be subject to a couple little changes if the auditors come in and have some suggestions for us. But I would say probably in the next week or so, I'll be sending that out to you. Hand-in-hand with that, I'll be sending to you a couple of examples of the budget format we're doing. The departments now have turned in all their summaries, and they have the new format that we put together, even newer than last year. It includes some narratives and goals, and how they tied to the city council goals. We also have some performance measure metrics that are in there that start measuring what they're using those tax dollars for. So it'll be kind of fun, from a budgeter's perspective, putting that together. But I think it'll be some great information for you and for the public as well. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you. Councilman Couch?
Just to have a quick thank you to the mayor, Aaron, and Mark, and city staff on the help with the citizen concerns on Jones Road. With the high water and the new development over there, there was some flow issues with runoff from the development going to, into one of the neighbor's fields, and basically flooding it. So I think that the concerns have been settled, and I don't see anybody acting irrational. I think the developer will work with the landowners, hopefully, and they can come to a peaceful resolution. So just thank you guys on that, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Owen?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Corningay?
I just wanted to mention the economic forecast dinner last night, too, while they were gone now. But it was very informative. We had four universities represented there, I'm not sure, PSU, and then there were a few that were talking a lot about trades and this and that, and like, this is going to be the thing. And I'm glad they're starting to focus on trades, like everyone doesn't go to college for four years, you know, and not everyone even goes to college, but we need trades to be able to sustain our youth and keep them around. Another thing was, there were a couple other things to say. I was wondering if there was a library update, like if we're going to be able to see the library? I haven't heard about that.
Yeah, so that's probably my bad. I said I was going to set up a date to do that, and I haven't done that yet. It's been busy. It's been kind of busy.
Another thing, sorry, another thing was, the trail builders, Skagit Trail Builders are now going every two weeks, trying to get this trail done before hiking season. It's looking really good. It's gotten quite a ways out. I missed last session, and it's like crazy, it takes you about, it's probably about a good 15, 20-minute hike right now, just off of the main trail end. And we got a long way to go, but there's still a lot of progress. But every two weeks now, the next one is the 22nd of February at 10:00 a.m., starting in the parking lot. And it's kind of muddy up there right now, but I almost couldn't figure my way up there. I think that was it. Oh, that's one more thing. Oh, well. Another thing is I've been starting to visit the dog park, sorry. And I thought that we had a small dog area, and I also remember there was an area we were thinking about expanding it to. What's up with the dog park now? Because I've actually been asked today.
Yes, the dog park just has a single mixed-size play area, but if you walked into the dog park and looked to the left, or you looked north, there's room there, or at least there had been room there, to essentially mirror that with an equally-sized, you know, facility that could be, you know, small dog versus large dog. So we just never had budgeted the funding for, really, the fencing is the expensive part of that.
Oh, I thought we, for some reason, I thought we had one already, for some reason, but...
No, the little dogs have to be brave. Put on their big doggy collars and go in there.
That's all I got. I was just curious. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kinser?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman DeYoung?
Thank you. About four things here. So Helping Hands Food Bank, the executive director of, had to be called away, otherwise they would have made a presentation today, but they held their thank you event that was very well-attended, with over 200 folks. We had good participation by county commissioners that were there, we had face painting for the kids, and thank you to Double Barrel Barbecue for providing lunch gratis. And it was good to show the solution center and hear a lot of laughter from the kids that were there, so that was fantastic. As was mentioned, I spent five days, four nights last week, at no cost to the city, in supporting our legislative agenda. It was important that we had a unified team down there, and so I was giving visual support, and it was also an additional resource for the comments made by our Public Works Director and the mayor. Also, I enjoyed working with our contract lobbyist. I felt that we had high frequency of communication, and that we effectively worked together, so that was enjoyable. Also, would like to thank the neighbors of Ward 6 for taking care of some wind thinning of their trees by strategically deliming some of their branches on trees. We did not have an event that we've had in previous years during the windstorm of branches or trees going across power lines, and we kept power in Ward 6 during the last storm. So compliments to the neighbors. And then today, I traveled to Olympia and back for the governor's statewide salmon strategy update stakeholder workshop. I spent $32 in parking and in some food. But this was a really interesting event to be at with a whole bunch of PhDs and folks from federal, state, and other government agencies, talking about the strategic plan going forward as to salmon enhancement and restoration, and the involvement of the Skagit River in that process. Of keen interest to me was their talk about the predation, gill netting from bank to bank, also universal moratorium for years of, to stop fishing in order, for everyone to stop fishing in order to rebuild the fishing stocks, and then robust conversation about removing dams. We live 55 miles away from Ross Dam, and there is a bill in Olympia now to remove that dam. And when I first saw it, I thought it was not serious, but then some folks have taken up that mantle. So I don't think it's going to happen, but it is something that is, these piercings and removal of dams is quite the topic when they're talking about salmon restoration. So I have further details, but just be a resource if you need it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen? Nothing? Okay. Councilman McGoffin?
I just first like to thank Chief Tucker and the Police Department for the radar reader board.[1799.83]
That was the number-one complaint out of Klinger, was people speeding on it. And I've already seen it help. People have started to slow down, and I'm excited to see the lights flick on a couple times.
I don't know if you noticed it, when you drive by and the lights flash, and then you see Paul Eaton's patrol car sitting right on the other side of it at his house, it looks like we're set up there to hammer people. It's got to work.
It's already working. I see people slow down right away when they see the cop car, so, thank you. The second thing is, last Friday, the Skagit Sheriff's Office posted that there's an active campaign going on for spam calls. They are acting as if they're calling from the sheriff's office. And just a friendly reminder, the city's never going to call people asking for payments or if you have an arrest warrant. I'm sure Chief Klinger would love to have you come in and say hi if you do, but we don't ever expect you to provide personal information over the phone. If you do get a call, just hang up and call the main line or come in in person and try to settle it. But just a heads up on that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, the big topic is Olympia. We were down there. I want to thank Mark Strulie. He's our lobbyist. He helped us put together meetings with some influential people that otherwise, we otherwise wouldn't have thought about contacting. So, I really want to thank Mark Strulie. He also helped us coordinate our testimony, which was important. It needs to be impactful, and he actually hit the key points for us, so it was great. And I want to thank Liz Lovlett. She asked the all-important question when we were down there. We are asking for $850,000 to do the underpass. It's important that we do do that because of the arrangements that we've made with BNSF. But more than that, if we're not able to garnish that money, it will probably run us about $5 to $6 million if we have to push that out. So, Liz, in her wisdom, asked the question, so if you don't, if you don't receive the $850, will you be back for the $5 or $6 million? Well, of course we will. Of course we're going to be back. So, it was wise that she asked that question, so that everybody was aware that this is something that is, it's prudent, it's something that can happen now, and it can be very cost-effective if they move on it. So, that was a real win for us, and Mark and I were absolutely thrilled when, when we heard her ask that question. So, yeah, that was a lot of fun. And I want to thank Carl for being down there and doing what you did, too. Yeah, thank you. The other thing that I want to mention is, the, this is going to be at the next council, right before the next council meeting, next Wednesday, February 26, from 5:00 to 6:30, is an open house for the Almstead Park Development Project. Everybody's invited. I'd love to see council there. The public is certainly welcome, and that's who we'd like to see there to give input. So, you should see flyers on that. It's also on our website, but that's next, that's two Wednesdays from now, February 26, from 5:00 to 6:30, right here in these chambers. And the other is, so, one of our own is doing a fundraiser. She's going to be doing, she calls it the Fox 2020 Stair Climb Fundraiser Lunch, and I want to invite everybody to this. It's on February 14. So, it's a fundraiser to help Marnie get everything that she needs. Actually, does she need the money, or is it just trying to compete that way as well? Who can get the most fundraiser involved?
It's a competition, and Marnie is very good at it, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And she says it's a tiny little thing, but she can go. She can, she can climb those stairs. So, you know, if you're looking for a place to have lunch on Friday, on the 14th, from noon to 1:30, come here. It's $20 for the meal, kids under 5 eat free. It says, "Bring a friend, make a donation if you like," and there'll be salad, lasagna, garlic bread, corn, and Texas brownies, all the comfort foods that we all love. So, I encourage everybody to participate in that. So, and that's about all that I have. I do want to say that we only have a couple more weeks with Mr. Berg. It's been quite the transition, but it's been a very smooth transition. I credit that to the expert team that we have. We do have a lot of professionals here. They've always worked well, they continue to work well. The transfer of information and the respect is huge. I'd love for the public to know that. It's quite honoring to see all this happen. And we're going to be on the 9th, make sure I have this right, on the 11th, on March 11. That's going to be from, what did we say? 3:00 to 5:00, right here in the council. We're going to have a open house for Mr. Berg. We invite you to come and, you know, send your well wishes and thank him for the 14 years that he's been here. He's done a wonderful job for the city. So, I want you all to know that. Spread the word. That's also on our website, and I think that'll be his last council meeting as well, that evening, so, yes.
Just before you break on this, one thing I forgot. It's kind of a sad, sad thing. One of the, one of our dispatchers passed away over the weekend, or actually, she passed away last night, was having some medical issues at work, and just thought she was just working too much and tired, went home and had a massive, I believe, stroke or some brain aneurysm-type thing go on. And they kept her on life support last night. A bunch of us headed up to Bellingham last night, and I'd never experienced this before, but Jared and I went up, and they had a walk of honor, walking her from, when they unhooked her from life support to the operating room to harvest her organs, and she's an organ donor. Pretty humbling experience, but 911 is, has taken a beating the last couple of days. They are seriously down. It was Tracy Gillian. Her spouse is, her wife works at Evergreen, and I think the school family's kind of taken it real hard as well. So, we lost somebody local here, and I forgot to bring it up earlier. I apologize for that, but just thought you'd like to know.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Kind of a sad note to end it on, but, so at that, I am going to open public comment. It is 7:56, and I invite anybody who'd like to come forward to give public comment, to step forward, keep it to about three minutes, give your name and your address, and you're welcome to come. Anybody for public comment?
Hi. Carol Torres, 718 Jennings Street. I'm just wondering if the city would consider putting an outhouse down by the dog park. There's no place for adults to go, thanks.
All right. What about going across the park, over to the park? No? Thank you. Anyone else? All right, it is 7:57, and I'm going to close public comment. And here's something that I don't think I've ever seen in my years as a councilwoman or even as a mayor. We have absolutely no new business and absolutely no old business. So, unless there's anything for the good of the order, without objection, we are adjourned.